Okay, I see we have four future board members sitting in front of us, so. Okay, in any case, welcome to the regular board meeting for the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors for this Tuesday, September 10th, 2013. So, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
(Inaudible)
Supervisor Pine.
Here.
Supervisor Groom.
Present.
Supervisor Slocum.
Here.
Supervisor Tissier.
Here.
President Horsley.
President. Okay, thank you,女士, for time for public comment. The first public comment is for Martin Fox, followed by Allison Madden.
Good morning, President Horsley, honorable members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Holland, Mr. Byers, and my fellow veteran, Mr. Maltby. Thank you for your service to this county. I understand it's not easy. I hope you had a good vacation and are well-rested and ready to get back to work. It's a pleasure to see you. Last month, Department of Defense officials announced that they would reduce the number of active-duty Army soldiers from 490,000 to possibly 380,000. The active-duty Army consists of soldiers who have been deployed three, four, or more times. The Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Division admitted it had no treatment resistance or treatment noncompliance solutions during the suicide prevention workshop that I attended yesterday at the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. That means San Mateo County veterans and their family members are at risk, an unnecessary risk. It is long past the time that the Board of Supervisors should repudiate the intellectually and morally obscene policies and procedures of its health system and vote to implement LoRa's law, if for no other reason than to avoid the personal responsibility that attaches to ratifying those policies and procedures. Check your insurance policy. There is no coverage for this kind of malfeasance. I wrote your insurance policy. LoRa's law is the United States Department of Justice certified as an effective, efficient, and economical hospitalization and recidivism reduction program. LoRa's law produces positive results. Continuing to rely on the Lannan-Petrus short act will result in more injuries like the knifing of the 76-year-old mother in San Mateo last month. Please have mercy on our veterans and their families. Vote to implement LoRa's law.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Allison Madden?
Good morning. Thanks for having me. I just wanted to make a very brief introduction. I'm speaking on behalf of a group. It's a California public benefit nonprofit called San Francisco Bay Marinas for All, and our mission is to secure public access to the existing marinas and to prevent the privatization and eradication of the ones that we have now. I'm the secretary of that group, and I wanted to introduce myself. We hadn't come to speak to the county for quite a long time because we understood that there was no, you know, impact with regard to the former Pete's Harbor. And I would just like to introduce the concept and ask for your support that our attorney, Ellen Trescott, after some Public Records Act request that we did, discovered that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service actually owns the access road of One New Chelly, and it's not private. And they're interested in discussing, you know, potentially keeping it perpetually open to public access and potentially, you know, involving the county to see if there is any, you know, land out there that could be swapped for that access strip to keep it dedicated for permanent public access. And so I'd just like to ask you to start considering that and considering support for that, because without that, it could potentially have been treated as private land. The understanding was it was Leslie Salt giving to post, and then nobody really knew, but since 1999, it was actually given to the refuge. And so we discovered that, and we would like to ask for your support there. I'd also like to ask that just the representatives of the county to the BCDC, who have actually already been, you know, very, you know, willing to talk to us, that they take the position that the permit that the BCDC recently issued to take the marina out, to allow the removal of docks in Smiths Lou, was actually the improper permit. It was for minor maintenance, and they did it on a fast track without considering the major permit requirement. So, thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments, Ms. Madden. It's now time to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda items, or remove them from the consent agenda.
I'll move to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda items.
You second?
I'll second that, but, Mr. President, I would like to abstain from item number 54.
Okay. Then, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The first is to honor Annie Tai as Employee of the Month for September 2013 and authorize the print. Well, the rest of the, I already signed the condition, so. Mr. Maltby?
Mr. President, members of the Board, it's a pleasure to introduce to you and to our audience today our Employee of the Month for September 2013, Annie Tai. Annie, could you please stand? Annie is a community program analyst II in the health system. She began her career with San Mateo County in 2006, and she currently works for the Public Health Policy and Planning Unit. In that capacity, she has worked on several projects to improve language access for services for clients. Annie is one of the few health system employees who can read and write in Chinese, and therefore is able to assist others who need help in editing and improving written documents. Annie has served on the Chinese Health Initiative for the past several years, and this is in the capacity above and beyond her assigned duties. She has also assisted in programs across the health system, ensuring the translation of material is accurate and culturally appropriate to the Chinese community. She does this with true engagement. She's always positive. She's solution-focused and committed to how the health system can deliver better services to the Chinese community. Annie also provided translation to the STD program, which resulted in increased access to medical and preventive services for many members of this community. Not only is Annie's work in this area of high caliber, she takes great pride in improving all of our services and goes above and beyond to insist programs across the health system. Indeed, Annie is one of the county's many outstanding employees, and we are fortunate to have her working for San Mateo County. Our only speaker this morning is Carl Hess.
Good morning, members of the Board, county managers, and our community. I thank you very much for honoring Annie Tai as an Employee of the Month. Your act serves as recognition of Annie's work beyond her prescribed day-to-day duties and responsibilities. It's very easy, as an employee, to work in a silo and not make the effort to see the larger service to the community, and Annie has that vision, and I am proud to be her supervisor. About seven years ago, I hired Annie for her all-around abilities as a bookkeeper and business manager for my newly-created program, Public Health Emergency Preparedness. Keeping track of up to five grants totaling about $1 million in the government sector is no easy task and can be very frustrating at times. And about a year after that, there was a need in the STD HIV program to act as a translator for sexually exploited monolingual Chinese women. I saw this as an opportunity for Annie to briefly add variety to her work, while at the same time getting in direct contact with the community and learn about a portion of the public health mission. Annie returned from the temporary assignment completely energized. She expressed to me that this was very fulfilling and meaningful work and wished to be considered in the future for other translation assignments. A variety of work and meaningful work are valuable components to a healthy employee, therefore I gave her the freedom to accept translation requests in the future. Since then, Annie has been able to help other departments in a variety of services, including calligraphy, Mandarin, and Cantonese translations included, and I'm very proud of her service to our community. So, thank you again for this recognition.
Annie, if you would just come forward.
Good morning, everyone. It's truly my honor to be able to come here today, to personally thank all those who had elected me. The county has a lot of remarkable workers, other than myself, and I'm excited to see all the great words we'll put out in the future. One of the missions of the health system is to improve the accessibility of health and health-related services to the resident of San Mateo County who has limited English proficiency. Of the minority we have in the county, Chinese-speaking community is one of the fastest-growing one, making it critical that our resources and services are accessible to them. In addition, services the health system provide, especially in needs, to be rendered in a culturally-sensitive manner, in such a way that the receiver of the services understands and is comfortable with it. It is my honor to be able to become part of the team that helps enhancing the needs. One time, I remember, I was helping out a non-English-speaking senior who was trying to get a death certificate of her husband. Due to language barrier, this lady arrives through the vital statistics department, and she cannot get what she wants because of the, she cannot communicate with the staff over there. She was frustrated, and she started crying to me while she was talking to me. During our course of conversation, I found out that this lady little bit more about her situation. Her children had left her alone in this country. In the past, she had been relying mostly on her husband in her daily needs. She doesn't speak English. She had financial and health problems, and the worst part is she did not know how and where to get help. By being able to communicate with her and earning her trust, not only that I can help her with getting the death certificate, but also I was able to take this opportunity to comfort her and gave her a Chinese version of this little booklet, Help at Home, which is a reference guide of the services we have available in San Mateo County. And I was also able to tell her that what services are available in the county for her. Although I cannot guarantee that she could find all the assistance she needs, but at least I could give her the direction. And by seeing her leaving the department building with relief in her face, this is what makes my work at a health system rewarding and meaningful. I would like to take this opportunity to thank all those who trusted me to help break down the cultural and language barriers. The kind of work is both meaningful to all types of communities and is a task that continues to motivate me. I want to thank you to Matthew Gelmaker, Marshall Fong, Ricky Cork, Brian Semora, the now-retired Public Health Director, John Conney, my coworkers at the Vital Statistics Department, Communicable Disease Control, Aging and Adult Services, my own Public Health Emergency Preparedness Team, Joseph Balabas with the Linguistic Assets Services, and all those who have served on the Chinese Health Initiative for trusting me and granting me the opportunity to help out with translation and interpretations. Thank you to SD Mayor for recognizing my work and recommending me in this election, and of course, last but not least, my supervisor, Carl Hess. Without his guidance, trust, and support, I would not be able to come here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. And I know that the translation, both in Chinese script, is actually useful for both Cantonese and Mandarin, because although the language is different, the written language is exactly the same. So, both Cantonese speakers and Mandarin speakers can understand that. So, next is a presentation of a resolution honoring Deborah Torres for her years of service at the county of San Mateo. Supervisor Warren Slocum.
Thank you. First, let me just begin by asking, or making a motion, to approve the resolution honoring Deborah Torres upon her retirement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, I came to know Deborah Torres during these past eight months, especially because of the unfortunate events related to two fires in the North Fair Oaks area. She, let me just say, she's done amazing things, I think, for the residents of North Fair Oaks, and especially those 80-plus residents that lived in the Hallmark Apartment Building on Woodside Road. I was, had the pleasure of standing by her at the armory in front of those 87 people when they first arrived there from their burned-out apartment buildings, and she was there along with Beverly Beasley Johnson and a host of other people from Red Cross, and on, and on, and on. But it was just an amazing story of the county coming together and providing services to these people who basically had lost everything. And I really got to know Deborah at that time. So, it's my pleasure to present a resolution to Deborah Torres, the Director of Collaborative Community Outcomes Division of the Human Services Agency, upon her retirement from public service. And just for those of us that may need a refresher, Collaborative Community Outcomes Division includes the Center on Homelessness, reentry services, childcare services, veterans' services, the Children's Funds, the Fatherhood Collaborative, and the Day Worker Program, quite a variety of programs that she's responsible for. Unfortunately, Debbie is a graduate of the University of California, Berkeley, with a bachelor's degree in social work in Spanish, and a master's degree in social work, children, and families. During her 36 years of experience in public mental health and social services and the human services work, she's been a licensed clinical social worker with the state of California for approximately 32 years. And very special recognition went to her in 2012, when she was named Social Worker of the Year for San Mateo County. As I was talking about the emergency shelter, Debbie often had to communicate and addressed each of those fire victims by their first name and spent a lot of time with them to get to know a little bit about them and their special needs. And as you all can imagine, during the first days of that group being in the armory, it was quite a stressful situation for those families and those kids. And her compassion and sensitivity, I think, was unparalleled and really sets the bar quite high for those of us in the public service. It's with gratitude that I present a resolution to Deborah Torres on her retirement from the county. I know we'll all miss her, as will her county family, and we wish her sincere best wishes for every success as she opens up this new chapter. And a little inside information that you may not know, I understand that her son is getting married at the end of this month, I think this month, in New York, and so I wish to congratulate you on that milestone and wish your son and his new wife to be years of happiness. So, thank you for your county service. You're a magnificent example of the best of public service. Thank you. I'm going to give you this resolution and give you a chance to speak in just a second, but maybe some of my colleagues would like to thank you.
I too would like to thank Deborah for all her hard work with the Human Services Agency, and especially even before she got there, her wisdom of going to Berkeley. That was, that was very, 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 very smart on your part, wasn't it, Carol? Anyway, you've done a yeoman's job. You've helped a lot of people in our county. You've put a lot of time and effort into a lot of areas of the Human Services Agency, so I really want to thank you for your hard work and dedication.
Thank you. Thank you.
Deborah, thank you for especially the work you did on homelessness. The first several years I was here, I served on the HOPE Housing Our People Effectively, and your leadership there and your creative ideas were just always so welcome, and most of them got implemented. So, congratulations and best wishes.
Thank you.
Dave? I'd like to extend my thanks as well, Deborah. I've, the last six or nine months, have become more involved in homeless issues, particularly in South City, so just when I need you the most, you'll be heading out. But we're very grateful for all your service.
And Deborah, I've worked with you, obviously, on a number of different subcommittees. One was the Domestic Violence Task Force, and the HOPE Task Force, and then the Fatherhood Collaborative. And on domestic violence, you know, you had to, you oftentimes took a lot of slings and arrows, you know, because there had to be somebody, and you did it with grace and dignity, and always came through and always responded in a helpful way, and made that committee much more effective than it otherwise would have been. And I will very sincerely miss your kind and supportive services to this county and to the Board of Supervisors as well. So, congratulations on a successful career. Wish you the best in retirement.
Thank you all. Maybe we could all go down and get our picture taken with Deborah.
Okay.
Happy to do that.
manager, Mr. Holland, Mr. Byers, and the audience here. I have loved working in San Mateo County for these past 36 years, or 36 years in my career, and since 1986 here in the county, with the two largest departments in the county, both Health Services and Human Services Agency. So, I think I've gotten the best of San Mateo County from the incredible two departments. I've had the pleasure of working with each member of the Board here, and the tremendous support in those community endeavors that are so dear to my heart, as you've mentioned, parole reentry services, the homeless, working with the homeless in this county, and many of you have been out there for the one-day count, out at 6:00 in the morning, and really getting a bird's-eye view of what it's like to live in this county and not have housing. The supportive work to the immigrants and the day laborers in this county, in the North Fair Oaks area, to children and families, to addressing issues of child welfare and domestic violence and child abuse, mental health issues, involvement of consumers and family members. I've had the best of the best of experiences in this county that I will always, always treasure. This was a total surprise about this resolution and our staff in the county. I think it was Edwin Chan and Tammy and whoever else was involved in putting this together. I didn't see it until the agenda came out on Friday, and Tammy, my admin secretary, shared it to me. It's a true, true honor to be recognized by all of you, but a more true honor to be able to work in this county with those that are so needy and the most vulnerable. I've had the best of directors in this county, both in the Health Department and my current director in the Human Services Agency, Beverly Beasley Johnson, who's a visionary and, you know, advocates for the vulnerable populations. And I've learned to take kind of slings and arrows and all of that from the best, who can stand up there and advocate for what is truly, truly important in this county, which are the needs of the most vulnerable population. Although I'll be ending my career in the county here as an employee on September 20th, and my son gets married on the 28th, so I kind of end this work and then have a week to get together for the next work, the next chapter there. But since I'm a county resident, you'll probably see me here in a different capacity. So, I may not be here reporting on different issues, but I hope to be here as a member of the county, speaking on those issues that are dear and near to my heart, from the county resident's perspective. And having had those years of county work, then I will have a different perspective, but my commitment is to continue to do that. And the next chapter of my life, I'm not too sure exactly what I'm going to do, but I know it will continue to be public service. And in the last couple of months, that I've learned so much about disaster response in terms of the fires that we've had in the North Fair Oaks area, and I've gotten involved more as a Red Cross, and I'm very committed to being part of the disaster response team for the American Red Cross. The incredible work that they do in this county and across this country, this world, has just been unprecedented. So, it's something new I've learned. I thought I knew a lot of things in this county, but you learn every day. I've worked here for many years, but each and every day, there's something to learn from all of you, from the incredible staff in the agency, in the Human Services Agency. But I'm amazed that every day you can learn something new. So, I'm winding down on Friday, September 20th, but you'll probably see me again. So, I won't say goodbye, but I will say thank you from the bottom of my heart. This is an honor I will treasure forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. I wanted to ask you which district she lived in, so I can get her as a volunteer in mine. Oh, okay. Supervisor Groom?
Yeah, remember, we're still working on the district line, so we maybe blend up in your district.
Yeah, I know, but pretty soon. Okay, we really will miss you, Deborah. Item number three is a presentation of a resolution honoring Our Place Childcare Center. Supervisor Carol Groom.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our Place, the County Childcare Center, has been providing high-quality childcare to San Mateo County employees in Redwood City since 1993. It's run by the Marin Day Schools in Bright Horizons, serves children from six weeks old to five years. It provides a nurturing and engaging environment for infants, a preschool, and a pre-kindergarten environment for the older children, and external supports to both parents and professional development for the teachers. As we move forward in this county on the Big Lift Initiative, to make high-quality, early childhood education and childcare accessible and better, we will look to centers like Our Place as a model. So, after 20 years of service, we want to recognize you today. I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. And so I would like to invite Allison Rock, who is the director, along with my new four friends, to accept this resolution.
They have been so patient.
Yeah, they have.
(Inaudible).
Okay.
Looking good, looking good. Looking good, Jack.
They are the darling kids. Yeah.
Allison, did you want to say something?
No, just thank you so much. I really appreciate it being part of the County Child Care Facility and we all love you everywhere and if you have trouble, you can all welcome to bring me to help.
Okay. Bye.
Thanks for coming.
Are each of these youngsters gonna intern with us today or?
Bye.
Bye.
He is a doll. Well, any case. That's cute. Presentation of a proclamation designating September twenty-second through twenty-eighth, twenty thirteen as full Prevention Awareness Week Supervisor Adrienne Tessier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I wanted to bring awareness to the issue of preventing injuries and deaths caused by accidental falls among some of our most vulnerable residents. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention estimates that more than one-third of all Americans over the age of sixty-five will fall each year and that falls are the leading cause of fatal and non-fatal injuries and traumatic hospital admissions for our seniors. In one year in San Mateo County, falls accounted for forty-four deaths, over fourteen-hundred hospitalizations, and over forty-one-hundred emergency department visits. This is a very serious issue to all of us as we have parents, siblings, and friends who are vulnerable to tragedy. This problem is also very costly to families and also to the county with the average charge for a fall-related hospitalization for our over sixty-five-year-old residents is approximately eighty thousand dollars. But we are fortunate here in San Mateo County because we have outstanding public servants who work every day to address this issue. As many of you know, in March of two thousand and three, health providers in this county came together to form the San Mateo County Fall Prevention Task Force, which actually meets regularly to do public outreach and to advocate on behalf of older adults. Today, we have Francine Seraphin Dixon from the Hospital Consortium of San Mateo County with us and Marie Violet, Director of Sequoia Health, to accept this proclamation declaring September twenty-second to the twenty-eighth of two thousand and thirteen as Fall Prevention Awareness Week in San Mateo County. And I also want to thank all of you for all the hard work you do to really keep our seniors safe and educate them on how to take care of themselves and not end up in these tragic accidents. So, we thank you and I'd like to make a motion to accept this proclamation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor? Aye.
Okay, Francine and Marie, if you'd like to come forward.
Good morning, supervisors. Thank you so much for recognizing and honoring the San Mateo County Fall Prevention Task Force with this proclamation for the Week of Fall Prevention Week in San Mateo County. The task force, which began at Sequoia Hospital ten years ago, has grown to include over thirty member, community members and organizations. It's a very robust collaborative of people that are passionate and dedicated to preventing falls and keeping the older adults in our community healthy and being able to age in their homes in the community where they really want to be. And the good news is that we know that falls are not part of the aging process. They are preventable and that's our task. And the theme of the week for fall prevention this time is preventing falls one step at a time. And I think that really describes the work that our task force has done over the last ten years. We've not only provided evidence-based and evidence-informed education to older adults, to families, to caregivers. We've worked with physicians. We've worked with the emergency services departments and have tried to touch everybody that's working with seniors and older adults in our community. We also try to be sensitive to the language needs and a number of our pieces are English, Spanish, and some of them in Chinese. And that's always a goal to reach more and more. During the past year, we have given surveys to sixteen hundred older adults over sixty-five and they have acknowledged and chosen the first concern they have is accidents in their home. And that, our education materials really address that. So, we're there, we're there to help. Although we know there are still deaths, there are still falls, we're still seeing them in our hospitals and emergency rooms. The EMS services are picking up people daily throughout the county and we feel that our work has just begun and we have a lot, a lot to do because the older adults population in our county is growing. And so, we have a huge charge and we're ready for it over the next years. So, we thank you very much for your continued support. These proclamations mean a lot to us. They validate our work and also help us get the message out about this very preventive public health issue. And to better, or sort of show you what we're doing, Francine is going to give you a packet or maybe has given you the red packet. Okay. This is a good one, debunking the myths of older falls, falls among older adults. We sent an article to all the senior centers and home care agencies throughout the San Mateo County in August. And then we have a risk assessment, little checklist to say, are you at risk for falling? And the yellow medication card that's given throughout the county and this is, we should all have these in our wallets. So, that will inform you, I hope. Thank you so much for your support. We are truly appreciative.
Thank you and thanks Sequoia Hospital for the project. Thanks for bringing it to our attention Supervisor Tessier. And actually, it just reminds me of my own mother had a fall when she was older. She did have Alzheimer's unfortunately and that really ended her life, or the quality of life just was over essentially. So, it is important and it's a good project. Next is a presentation of a proclamation designating September thirteenth as Attendance Awareness Month Supervisor Carol Groom.
Thanks, Mr. President. This, September is Attendance Awareness Month. School attendance is critical to a child's academic success and learning at all ages from preschool to high school. Chronic absenteeism, which is defined as a student missing ten percent or more days of school in a calendar year, is one of the strongest indicators of future dropout. Nationwide, one out of ten students in kindergarten and first grade are chronically absent. Chronic absenteeism in kindergarten predicts low academic achievement in later grades and it is crucial to address the problem of chronic absence in early years before our children slip off track academically and poor attendance habits become entrenched. Daily attendance in preschool through second grade has been identified as an essential component to child's early learning and it impacts a child's ability to read proficiently by third grade, the critical turning point between learning to read and reading to learn. As part of the San Mateo County Big Lift Initiative, the San Mateo County Office of Education and Community Partners are taking on this important issue through the school system and providing information to families. So, I would like to invite Denise Porterfield and Mifala Fairly from the San Mateo County Office of Education to accept this proclamation in honor of Attendance Awareness Month. First, I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Lot of pictures today.
Good morning, President Horsley, Supervisors, Mr. Maltby, Mr. Holland, Mr. Byers. I'm Mifala Fairly. I am the Administrator of Educational Support Services at the San Mateo County Office of Education. And on behalf of Superintendent Anne Campbell, I'd like to thank you for this proclamation designating September Attendance Awareness Month. Superintendent Campbell wanted to be here this morning, but she's back at the San Mateo County Office of Education, actually hosting an Attendance Awareness Month event. We're calling this event the Attendance Matters, Stopping Chronic Absence in Its Tracks. This event is intended to help preschool and elementary school administrators understand the issues associated with chronic absence and to provide them with the resources and support to better address the problem, especially when it comes to working with young children in the early learning years. Superintendent Campbell looks forward to partnering with the Board of Supervisors in the future to make sure that every child in San Mateo County is able to take full advantage of high-quality public education. School attendance is one of the four pillars of the Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council's Big Lift, which you have supported through your generous investment of Measure A funds to support expanded preschool. Starting as early as preschool and kindergarten, missing ten days, ten percent or more of the days of it during an academic school year contributes to less than proficient reading in third grade. It also contributes to higher rates of suspension and lower academic achievement in middle school. By middle school and high school, chronic absence is a critical sign the students are likely to drop out. Local data from Redwood City revealed that one of the predictors of chronic absence was a child's previous year's attendance record. So, it's wise and well worth the effort to interrupt the pattern of chronic absence at the earliest ages possible. All of our school innovations and resources and improvement efforts will be for not if children are not in school. As a community, one of the most powerful things we can do to contribute to a child's success is to ensure that each child gets to school every day on time. Again, Superintendent Campbell, thanks you for your partnership and support and for proclaiming September Attendance Awareness Month in San Mateo County.
Good morning. I'm Denise Porterfield and I'm the Deputy Superintendent of Business Services at the San Mateo County Office of Education. And as Ms. Fairly said, we are most appreciative of your partnership in the Attendance Awareness Month and thank you for this proclamation. Every educator understands the moral imperative of educating our communities about the importance of everyday attendance in school, regardless of whether a child is experiencing his or her first year of formal schooling and pre-K or only a few years away from high school graduation. In both cases, regular school attendance is a primary foundation for education and lifelong success. Strong and regular attendance across the district can also be a source of additional revenue. Positive attendance allows schools to maximize all revenues generated through attendance and allows them to better meet the educational needs of their students. Chronic attendance, as defined already, is associated with lower academic performance in all grades and costs are increased when schools must provide interventions to struggling students. So, positive attendance and teaching this message to our community is a benefit for all of us. So, again, we'd like to thank you for the recognition of this important issue and we sincerely appreciate your support through the passage of this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. And as a former teacher, I know how important it is for kids to be in school every single day and I just want to commend Supervisor Groom for your work on children's behalf, not only schools, but the Big Lift. That I think is really important to the future of kids in our county and maybe to the country as well. So, thanks Supervisor Groom and thank you as well. The next item, item six, is the acceptance of the two thousand and twelve San Mateo County Agricultural Prop Report prepared by the Agriculture, Agricultural Commissioner Fred Crowder. And Weights and Measures, okay. I see your name every time I put gas in my car.
That's a great title. It just goes on and on. So, good morning, supervisors. President Horsley, County Manager Maltby, Mr. Holland. I'm Fred Crowder, the County Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures and thank you for the opportunity to present the two thousand and twelve Prop Report for San Mateo County. I thought that I had my presentation all ready to go, but in the few minutes I had to sit here, I made a couple of
Changes.
Changes, yeah, so.
I do that all the time in the back of a map pen usually.
It's good I had those. So, anyway, thank you for the opportunity to present the report. What I'll do is I'll provide you a quick overview of some of the highlights and then give you an opportunity to answer some, or to ask me some questions. Most of the numbers I'll provide are rounded from the report as I speak to them. So, if you're interested in exact values, refer to the report itself. So, one hundred and forty million dollars was the value of the agricultural production for San Mateo County for this past year. That's three million dollars more than what we saw in last year, which doesn't seem like very much, but it's substantial in the fact that it's, this is the first year since two thousand and seven where we actually saw an increase in our agricultural production value. So, our largest industry segment is floral and nursery crops, both indoor and outdoor. This composes eighty-one percent of our crop production and our value kind of rises and falls with the, how well the nursery industry is doing in California. But for us, this produced about a hundred and fourteen million dollars in value for both the cut flowers and for the, for the indoor and outdoor nursery stock, which was about two-point-four million dollars more than last year. The reasons for these increases on the nursery production side, we're seeing that even though values paid for commodities were down a little bit, production was up. And I think that reflects probably some economic recovery. However, in California, it's a very competitive industry and production rises to meet demand very quickly and so prices tend to stay fairly level. Our flower production, it composes about thirteen million dollars out of that hundred and fourteen million dollars I stated there. Flower production was actually down this year, both indoor and outdoor, as far as the total number of acres and square footage that we had. However, prices were up significantly, which gave us a net positive in that category. So, vegetable crops includes our bustle sprouts, artichokes, pumpkins, leeks, and the peas, the kind of crops that we traditionally see here in San Mateo County along Highway One, posted about seventeen-point-three million dollars in value this year, which is a four-point-four percent increase over last year. And that was largely due to increases in acreage as prices, again, remained fairly level or declined a little bit. So, with the exception of forest products, the remaining commodity groups, which comprise about six-point-six percent overall of our agricultural production, remain fairly level. Those would be livestock, well, actually, excuse me, they actually increased. That would include livestock, fruit and vegetable crops. Now, I see fruit and nut crops, that's what I'm trying to say, as well as field crops. So, the report also has a sustainable agriculture section where we talk about organic farming, farmers' markets, and pest exclusion and detection programs. And in organic farming, we have eighteen certified organic producers now in the county, whereas previously we had sixteen. Acreage increased from two-hundred-and-thirty acres to four-hundred-and-ten acres this past year. Farmers' markets, we're still maintaining about thirty farmers' markets in the county. And we have more farmers' markets in San Mateo County per capita than any other county in the state, which can be good and can be bad. Our larger markets are fairly stable. However, the smaller markets tend to come and go as there just aren't enough growers to support those markets or even public to be able to support them as well.
Can you just say, Fred, you know, about the organic growers? It's not, I think people think it's fairly easy just not using pesticides for one year. It's actually much more complicated to be certified.
It is. There's a tremendous amount of paperwork that goes with that. Any amendments that you add to it are significantly more expensive. And so, a lot of growers are actually operating under organic principles, but they're not certified as organic because it is a very expensive and very timely process.
Yeah.
So, I want to thank our department staff, especially Kelly Mayer, who spent a lot of time with our growers gathering this data and getting the report together. The crop report is available on the San Mateo County website under Department of Agriculture, Weights and Measures. And on the left side of the page, there's a little dropdown menu with links and resources and agricultural crop reports. We have every report on there going back to nineteen forty. In closing, I want to recognize Staff Biologist Ray Locke. He unexpectedly passed away this past year and Ray gave the county thirty-six good years and we're definitely gonna miss his sense of adventure and his good humor. And I thank you for your time and attention. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Supervisor Pine?
Thanks for your report. I had a question about bees in the county and honey production. There's been quite a bit in the press lately about, or some assertions that it's actually difficult to have beehives in various places in the county and that perhaps we could improve our regulatory in various places in the county, and that perhaps we could improve our regulatory framework, and I'd be interested in your thoughts and comments on that, as, you know, both the need and to, and the potential role the county might play in trying to facilitate, you know, beehives and bee, and honey production.
Yes, yeah, that certainly has become an issue that's gotten a lot of press, and I'd be glad to take some time and talk with you and your staff about that.
If you wanted to provide some general comments now, that would, I think, be interesting.
Well, I, you know, that, I mean, the issues that we're having with, you know, colony collapse disorder, you know, not only in California but throughout the, I mean, throughout the world, I mean, it's really important to have pollinators out there, and it's definitely a benefit, but, I mean, we're always, we're looking at a balance here. I mean, if you have 15 or 20 hives in a backyard, that can be a problem, but if you're looking at one or two hives, you know, I think you can fairly well manage that and not impact your neighbors, so, and also get the benefit of the bees themselves.
I would look forward to talking to you more about that.
Very good.
I'm glad that you said that only two has not much of an impact, because my wife decided to become a beekeeper, and she has to. So, any other questions? Okay, thanks Fred.
Thank you very much.
Item seven is Presentation of Service Awards, that'll be at 1:30 PM this afternoon. We're on to item number eight, the Health System is a Resolution Accepting a Grant from the Peninsula Healthcare District in the amount of $2,300,000 for July 1st, 2013 through June 30, 2014, in support of the county's Access to Care for Everyone program and authorizing an amendment to the agreement with Peninsula Healthcare District extending the term through June 30, 2014. Jean Frazier? There you are. Hi Jean.
Good morning. As Chief of the Health System, one of my personal goals, and of course the goal of the Health System, is to provide high-quality, accessible care to residents of the county. I'm very pleased today that we are entering into our second year of partnership with the Peninsula Healthcare District to ensure that we can provide that care to the tens of thousands of residents of the district who are uninsured and who do seek care from the Health System facilities. Dr. Susan Ehrlich recently updated the Peninsula Healthcare District's Board on the milestones in meeting quality benchmarks that relate to ensuring that we do provide excellent primary care, that we reduce the number of new patients who are waiting for a primary care appointment in our system, and our progress in managing chronic diseases such as diabetes that enable our patients to stay healthy. We're very pleased with the support, and particularly the confidence that the Peninsula Healthcare District Board is showing in the Health System, and in particular in the San Mateo Medical Center. We're very proud of this partnership, and I just want to say how deeply grateful we are that we are jointly ensuring that there's great care for district residents. Thank you.
Any questions?
No, I'd just like to comment and say how appreciative I am as well, because we have, Carol and I at different times have talked with the board members, we've worked with our health department, and it's really important to have these partnerships, we have them with many of the different hospitals, and it really makes a huge difference in the number of people we can serve, because we can't always provide every service, so it really gives a great balance, and thank you for your efforts with the district, and I want to thank the district board as well.
We should all add our thanks as well, it's very generous and helpful. Can we use this for the, what's called the IGT, the Intergovernmental Transfers, or...
Yes, it is, we do have the ability to actually leverage these funds and get matching federal funds, yes.
And I know that Supervisor Grum and Supervisor Tessier, and I've actually made some contact with them as well, so it's been a process of educating that board, and they've been real helpful, so we appreciate that. Yes, Supervisor Pine?
Yeah, I too stand my thanks to the Peninsula Healthcare District. You know, they're doing a lot of good work in a lot of areas, they're actually going to roll out a new dental model in the county, which is very exciting. I had just two questions for, for Ms. Frazier. You know, looking at the goals, they look to me pretty much the same goals that we had in '12, so is it fair to say we're basically trying to kind of keep those, we met the standards last year, and now the goal is to keep the standards, okay.
Right.
And then, I'd appreciate hearing your comments as to, you know, what happens when this money goes away, because it's, I guess it's only for the next fiscal year.
Yeah, it's our hope that this partnership will continue, of course, that's ultimately a decision by the Peninsula Healthcare District Board. We're all looking forward to the implementation of the Affordable Care Act. It introduces an enormous expansion of coverage, but the question of how quickly people will enroll, how accepting they will be of the new coverage options is something that we're all waiting with bated breath to see. So the next few years will be a time of great opportunity, but also great uncertainty for the Health System and the Medical Center in particular. So continuing the partnership through the first couple of years of the Affordable Care Act will actually be essential for us.
Yeah, I guess I misread, I kind of assumed that somehow it really was a discrete two years, but it sounds like there's openness to potentially continuing it.
I think that's a question that would be better addressed to the board, I don't want to in any way presuppose how they'll be spending their money, or...
I understand.
Et cetera.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, can I make a request, you may have already done this, and I'm sure the health department's done it, but it might be helpful to send a letter to the district board from the president of the board on behalf of the board thanking them?
I agree, we should do that, and I'll take care of that. Thank you.
I think one other thing that will happen, we hope, with the governor's budget this year and the Affordable Care Act, is they have promised to collect a lot of data, and so at the end of the first year of the Affordable Care Act, we, should we, should our prognostications be correct, we will have more information to provide to the Peninsula and the Sequoia Healthcare District, so be it, so that could be a good thing for us.
That's a great point, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Frazier. Next, we have one speaker on this, Martin Fox.
Thank you again for your service to the county. The county's Access to Care for Everyone program is a little bit of a misnomer. Mental health care is being provided certainly to people who volunteer for it, and I would ask the Peninsula Healthcare District and the Board of Supervisors to fill the gap, the gap that's created by the voluntary treatment-only policy of the health care system. I ask you to fill that gap, because we are going to be experiencing a tsunami of veterans as we draw down. They are a notoriously treatment-resistant, treatment non-compliance cohort of necessity in order to maintain unit readiness. Therefore, I think it's in our interest to help out an overloaded Department of Veterans Affairs, deal with the coming tsunami, and fill the gap by adopting Moore's Law. Thank you.
Supervisor Grum?
Thank you, I just want to make a comment also about the programs that we have in place for the mentally ill, as well as for those veterans who also suffer mental illness. I believe that the network of not-for-profit organizations that the Health Department and the Human Service Department have put together to serve, while we can always do better and we can always have more, but I think that we do a very admirable job. The partnership that's been created with several hundred not-for-profits in this county has served us well, and I just want to acknowledge that. There's always room for improvement, there's always room for more services and treatment, but I really want to acknowledge the quality that our not-for-profit partners' service deliver to the residents of this county.
Now, we need a resolution to accept the grant.
I'll move acceptance.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next is item number nine, it's a Resolution Authorizing an Agreement with Workday to Provide Subscription Services for a New HR Payroll System for the Term of September 10, 2013 Through September 9, 2018, in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,834,450. And, I'm not going to read A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. John Walton.
I wish he would.
I'd be happy to. Okay, Mr. Walton?
Good morning Supervisors, John Walton, Chief Information Officer. Morning, Mr. Holland, Mr. Maltby, and Mr. Byers. I'll make the presentation brief, then we can discuss it more in detail if you'd like. I'd like to start by saying that this resolution would actually create then a replacement, a single system, for a number of systems we currently have in the county. We have an older payroll system that's 20-plus years old now, that has been in place and serving an admirable duty, providing paychecks to employees and contractors as needed, but it has reached the age where it needs to be replaced now. The system that the seven items comprise, but also create an integrated HR system for many siloed HR functions we now have. So back last year, the combination of the HR Department, Controller's Office, County Manager's Office, and Information Technology Department, we came together to kind of create a solution, and we did several RFPs to select what we thought was the best technology we could find for the county. The technology is definitely newer and better than the older technologies it's replacing. As I mentioned, it's a single integrated system rather than separate systems that have to talk to each other. It's based on newer technology, that's what we refer to as cloud-based, so we're not hosting it here at the county anymore. It's being hosted by the vendor, like many other systems, for large companies, where we then have a built-in disaster readiness plan, where our data and system is protected off sites if we have a local disaster, meets very high security requirements that private companies require in their course of doing business. And it creates then a built-in, if you will, through the subscription model, path where the hardware and software is kept up to date, so we don't see these large peaks and valleys like we do on many systems that we implement, where we pay a lot of money upfront to implement the system initially, and then every few years have to go through a major refresh cycle to keep it current. I'd like to mention that of the items, of the seven items, numbers A, B, D, E, and F were all done through competitive RFP processes, where we released a public RFP for those sub-items, and asked for numerous companies to provide us competitive bids, and went through a cross-departmental evaluation process to select what we thought was the best solution for each of those subsections, which is why it's broken out into so many pieces here, because it's going to create a team. This project also asks you to approve the authority for me to execute change orders, because we're on a very tight timeline. One of the ways we're going to control costs on this project is to put this important system in place in under two years, which is significantly faster than most ERP systems go into place, and so we need a little bit of flexibility to make rapid changes if necessary. And then, in closing, I'll just mention, this is a pilot project for the agile approach we're doing to staffing. We're using almost every combination you can imagine of staffing to create this workforce over the next two years. One of the things I've heard a lot in my department is staff are often stuck maintaining the old systems while contractors come in and implement the new systems, and this is a case where we're finding a really good balance, I think, of taking existing staff and adding them to the project upfront, so they can maintain it after it's implemented and be part of that implementation team. But to do that, we need to bring some contractors in to backfill their current duties to maintain the old systems and keep the work flowing while both systems run in parallel during this implementation. So having said that, I'm happy to answer questions or provide more information.
Okay, questions? Supervisor Grum, or no? Any questions? Supervisor Pine?
Just a couple. But thanks for, the whole team for their hard work on this, I know this is a major undertaking, and it's pretty scary to think that we have 17 systems, some of which are 20 years old. I know you'll write the paychecks personally if need be, but hopefully we can avoid that. Let me see, what did I have for you? Could, you know, I was interested in the, you know, this necessity to do the waiver of the compliance with certain equal benefit ordinances, and it's explained, you know, why this was requested and granted, and maybe it's a question for county council, in that this must come up with other vendors too that have a national presence, where, you know, certain states have different laws, and, so, I don't know, any extra information on that?
Not really, I mean, you're right, you're absolutely right, it does come up on occasion with companies that have a presence outside of California, and when they raise it, we, you know, we talk through the issue with the company, and ultimately, you know, bring it to the county manager to make, and the board to make a waiver decision.
Okay. On the three-year extension, we can make that decision anytime in the first five years, is that correct?
Yes, what we tried to attempt was to lock in the best price possible for the first five years, so it's a flat subscription, and then give us an option to renew at the end of five years for an additional three years, also at a fixed price.
So we know that, we know that price for...
We know that price right now. It doesn't preclude us from renegotiating at any time that we think we could get a better price, we want to open negotiations, but one of the concerns with sort of these subscription models or cloud models is often people note that this price rises 10 or 20% every year, but what we're trying to avoid is any significant incremental increase, we're trying to control that as best we can over time.
Okay. And, you know, with the project, this complexity, there's a lot of moving parts, I mean, what, are there one or two things that are kind of top of your list that are going to keep you awake at night when you roll this out?
I think we've addressed most of those. I've done three other ERP implementations before coming here, so I have a lot of scars and lessons learned from whatnot to do, and they've all, I'm happy to say, all successfully were completed, but you definitely learn through the process, one or two. One of the things I will say is the partnership's very strong here, we have a good executive steering committee, so I think the executive sponsorship of myself and Ms. Valencourt, Mr. Adler, and Ms. Farless, I think is important, because by having that type of executive perspective on it, I think we can keep the project on track. We've also, one of the things is gone out and got a project manager that's experienced in the specific software, so we're not learning as we go, we definitely have someone with a lot of experience implementing these systems. And I think the fact that we're taking existing staff and assigning them to the project rather than just using contracts is going to make a big difference, because I think they have a vested interest in the success of the project, so I think this one will keep me awake less than the past ERP projects.
Okay. I actually have one request through the president, you know, perhaps it would be helpful, since it's a two-year implementation, if you could give us, you know, a members' memo or an update, you know, in a year, just whenever appropriate, just so we can all sleep at night, that would be...
Absolutely.
And then finally, I just, just to note, we appreciate the time you've taken, meeting with all, or some or all of us in advance of this meeting, which gave us a chance to field a lot of your, field a lot of questions with you.
Supervisor Tessier?
I just want to make a couple of comments. One, I really like the idea of doing this as a pilot program for the agile organization, because I think utilizing our existing employees, because we've heard in the past, they felt like they didn't get enough training to do some of these things, and they're behind the eight ball, and you've come in and done a great job on many fronts with IT of trying to give our employees those opportunities, I think it's terrific, and this will help us have them do the work in the long haul, but at the same time, as you say, do that balance between contractors and our existing employees. I also want to say I appreciate all the hard work that went in with the team, evaluating all this, and trying to pick the best of everything to try to put this together and make it as smooth as possible. So I just want to congratulate the team, and it's great to see the collaboration that we've had with all of you on this particular item, so thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Slocum, any comments?
Thank you, just a couple of quick things. Do you happen to have the count of the number of folks that will be involved in the agile part of all this?
Not off the top of my head, but we can provide it to you. I know the staffing plan total fluctuates depending on the specific tasks in the project, it fluctuates between a fixed staff of around nine or 10, up to as many as 20 at one time, but we can provide you the breakdown of what that staffing component looks like.
And do you have any comments on the notion of long-term cost implications for subscription-based software versus the way we used to do it, which is buy a disk, insert it, install it, and so forth?
And that's to Supervisor Pine's question as well, I think it's relevant. The old model, the CapEx versus OpEx model, is you would buy for a capital cost a certain software or hardware, and then you would continue to pay maintenance after the warranty expired, and the maintenance would usually fluctuate between 10 and 20% uplift year over year in terms of maintenance cost increase, that either the hardware company or software company would try to charge you year over year as sort of their increased cost of doing business and passing along to you. In the subscription model, you're still paying a per-user cost, but what we've tried to do by that five-plus-three option is to lock in a much lower cost increase and cap it at under 10% a year, which again, I think, provides us a lower total cost of ownership over the same eight-year period.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, actually, on the, it's actually on page five of this, and it says that the annual cost for, I guess it's roughly five years, is $766,890. What is it after five years? What are the annual costs after that? Are they the same? Are they the same?
They are slightly higher. I believe it's eight-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand comes to mind. Let me just check. We can check our numbers and get back to you, but it, it's slightly higher for the three-year renewal period.
How does that compare with our cost today with the PIPs system?
It's the, the, it's, would be hard to compare the cost of the system because the, the PIP system in fact won't be supported after another two or three years. So in a sense, what we're trying to do is compare the cost of a system that will be supported to, I guess, an unknown cost of a system that's unsupported. But if you were to compare it, I think it would be slightly higher year over year in just pure maintenance costs that we've historically spent for PIPs. But again, we never figured in the cost of replacing PIPs. So in a sense, we've paid a lower, perhaps, annual cost for the maintenance of the software we have, but now we've reached a dead end and that, that's what we're trying to avoid. We're sort of building a system that costs slightly more per user per year, but has a longevity built into it that we currently don't have.
So you just got a note that tells you...
Mike Murphy, our project manager, which is why I will sleep better at night on this project. If I were to round this number off, a year, the, the three-year annual subscription cost would increase to eight-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand.
Okay. That for the three, three years or each?
Per year.
Per year. So it goes up quite a bit.
And then the, essentially, you have to have sort of, you, you have to have, can maintain the legacy system for some period of time. How long does that have to be maintained and...
The legacy system will actually be turned off at the end of this project.
But don't you have to keep those records someplace?
We are going to convert the records into what we call a data warehouse.
Yeah.
So one of the, again, because the, the, the system, in fact, the PIP system's no longer going to be supported and, and the HR systems are many silo systems, what we've decided to do is convert some of the data over to the new system that we need to continue to process HR and, and payroll functions. But the historic data, rather than try to keep the old system alive and running, which costs staff time and, and things like that, what we're going to do is take all the data out of those systems and put it into a data warehouse where we can access it in the future if we need to. It's, it's similar to some of the things we're going to try that we'll be talking to you about in the future on the older criminal justice systems. When we, as we implement the new criminal justice systems, there'll be a portion of the data that gets converted over and the historic data, we're going to load into a data warehouse, so we still have access into it. But it'll allow us to shut off many of the old systems so that we can actually reduce our technology footprint over time.
Thanks. I have just one last question. It had to do with the waiver of equal benefits and it, the specific section says, "No contractor on the county contract shall discriminate in the provision of employee benefits between an employee and a, with a domestic partner and an employee with a spouse." I just can't support this waiver of that equal benefits. I, I just don't think that if that's a value that the county has, then, then that's the value that we have. And, you know, it's, it's not my problem that they have a problem with that in other states. So I, I just can't, I just cannot support that waiver of that equal benefits.
I, I think, and I know my, one of my deputy county councils, Dan Vilem, is here. He did a lot of work on this, on these contracts. And I think what I understand the case to be is that if there are any employees working on this project who are working from other states, it wouldn't apply to them, but all employees for, that are working in this state on this project, the equal benefits, you know, they comply.
I understand, but supposing, supposing one of those California employees gets transferred to one of those other states, are we now going to say?
Right.
If you have a domestic partner, same-sex marriage, that we're no lo, you're no longer going to have equal benefits? I just have a problem with that.
Dan, did you have a, why don't you take the, take the dais and address that question? I think this is something that has been discussed among the groups.
Good morning, board members. This is an item that we went back and forth with the company on quite a bit. And as Supervisor Pine asked Mr. Byers, this is something that a lot of companies have issues with. The county ordinance requires equal benefits for all employees who are working on county-owned property anywhere and working within the county or working on the county project in other parts of the country. And it's only that last, that last portion that Workday took issue with. Their stance is if they have an employee who is working in another state and that state passes a law that prohibits providing equal benefits to domestic partners, that they then would be in either violation of our contract or they would be in violation of that state law if they were to sign this con, contract provision. And so that is why they asked for that slight modification to the, to the standard county contract provisions.
But if those employees are working on something for San Mateo County, why would we not apply that? Well, I mean, I guess that's my opinion is that I think we apply that standard. So I'm not willing to waive it.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
On this? I mean, I, I'm glad you brought it back for, for future focus, for more focus. So couldn't Workday deal with this just by not assigning work to people in those states that, you know, if you're in, I don't know, off the top of my, one of the red states, many of these red states, you know, probably prohibit, you know, equal benefits to gay couples, I assume. And, and Workday's position is, well, if our employee is sitting in that state, you know, we can't give them the benefits if we wanted to because it's prohibited by that, that state law. But can't Work, can't Workday or can't we require Workday just, hey, don't use those employees then? You know, you guys are a big growing company, use an employee from another state.
That's a possibility. And if that's the stance you wanted to take, that is something that we could push for, my understanding, and there may be somebody here for...
And I guess, how real, and I guess, is it, is it like a real issue? Because, I mean, Workday's here in Pleasanton, you know, I assume most of the support will be here, local. I, I, I would, I wouldn't think this would come up, or if it did, it'd be really a one-off. And, you know, that's another way to dealing with it potentially, just say, Workday, you know, you can't, you just can't, you know, we want your, we want your business, but, I mean, it's, I just to get some feedback on that potential.
That, that is, that is certainly a possibility. My understanding is from, from a legal aspect, but somebody from either Workday or perhaps Mr. Walton could address the fact that this, because this is a cloud-based system, they will, they have the potential to have employees working from across the globe, not just other parts in the United States on this. And they may have to staff those employees depending on, you know, emergencies that arise, employees want to relocate for other issues, but, but perhaps somebody from Workday could address that.
You know, Mr. Walton, I mean, perhaps you're saying that since it's all cloud-based, they've got people all over the place working on the software at all, at any given time, since it's not customized, so much of it is not really customized to us. But yeah, maybe you could give some color on this.
I, I appreciate the conversation. I have strong personal opinions about this. Those aside, it, it is, is a bit of a double jeopardy situation, I suppose. I, I would, and we did push hard for the equal benefits waiver, given the fact that we think it's important for everyone to acknowledge and support equal benefits for partners irrespective of where they live.
Can I just interject too? If I, if you, if those same-sex partners were in the Army or the Navy or the Air Force in any state in the Union, do they not get equal benefits?
I...
I think they do.
...what federal law is.
Yeah, I think, right. They, they would, yeah.
You know, if, if the federal government thinks it's of value, I think in San Mateo County, it's of value to me and I think it's of value to my, I hope it's of value to my, I believe it is to my colleagues as well. I'm not willing to waive it.
I, I understand. If I can just finish perhaps to Supervisor Pine's...
Sorry for interrupting.
No, that's fine. One, one of the complexities of a cloud-based system is it, it's not limited, the workforce isn't limited to a geographic area traditionally. It could be nationwide, frankly, it could be worldwide. You could have contractors doing things on the servers or to the database that lived anywhere in the world. I think, when I've talked to other cloud-based companies, and this isn't unique to Workday, they typically employ a global workforce. And so though our values or our policies, we would like to see applied globally, the challenge for what I've heard from those companies' legal departments is, is they don't feel like they can enforce, even if they're willing to agree with, for all their employees in California or any other state, they can't, they can't enforce it globally because they don't control state or federal or frankly, global law when it comes to it. Though we would like to see them do that, I, I, I hear the, the idea about perhaps we tell companies that, okay, well, we're going to limit this, make sure you have your workforce then, perhaps be limited areas where they do support that. I, I, I can see that point. I'll just put myself in the shoes, though, perhaps if I were a partner in a, in a gay marriage, perhaps, you know, I have a sick mother or something, I want to move someplace for, for personal reasons, whether or not they support my union or not. Then, then in a sense, what we've done is we've limited the ability of that person to live certain places because then they would have to be laid off or not work for that company because they put themselves in double jeopardy. So I can, I can see both sides of the argument. I, I, I would like to see this supported, but it will frankly come up on every, every sort of global company contract we sign. And so we can certainly address it on this contract. I'm just, I'm trying to, as you talk, I'm trying to process it through how this would work with global companies that have workforces that could come from anywhere.
Any more comments in this?
Yeah, thank you. Let me just ask you, what would be the, the consequence of, of delaying this and trying to work this out or talking to the company in additional talks or getting a legal opinion? Are, are we on some sort of deadline where this has to be done today?
I, I never feel like we have a gun held to our head. I will say that, I don't. Unless this was something where the sky was falling, if we couldn't get payroll out, then I would tell you that, yeah, you know, this was critical. We could certainly talk about this more. It's been discussed a number of times. I think the only risk in a situation of delaying it is the company always has the option of saying, well, the price was limited to a certain amount of time, and if you don't approve it within the certain timeframe that we thought was going to prove we're going to raise the cost, but that's a company decision. I don't think that should dictate necessarily something we feel strongly about.
Well, we could approve it with, basically stating that we're not willing to, or waive the equal benefits clause.
Supervisor Tessier?
I just, I just have a question and I, I, I get where you're going, Mr. President. The question I have in the long run is if we decide that everybody has to abide by our guidelines, do we find ourselves out of the cloud market period and therefore we're sort of out of sort of the future of where everything is going? And it, it, we're kind of walking that fine line because you can't tell a global company what to do. We know what we want to have happen here and it's sort of like, I feel like we can't determine everybody else's decisions because we don't have that power either. So if we don't go in this direction with a, a cloud company, are we then limiting ourselves to something that we also don't have, a company that's going to support what we, what exists currently? And I, I get a little nervous that we're, we want them to do what we, what we have, but it may not be realistic in the cloud world and therefore does the county stay in the, you know, the dark ages as it relates to IT because of this? And so that's something, I mean, I would like to have, see if there's something we can work out, but if we can't, are we penalizing ourselves for future IT? Because I think most of what has been talked about in a lot of cities and counties and things is just that, everything's moving to the cloud and are we going to be left out in the cold? If that's the case, as difficult as this decision is, it's, I think it's one we, we have to make because I think our hands are tied. We can't tell global companies what to do. And, and that's an unfortunate thing.
One quick comment to that, I mean, I, I think you're, you're raising a really important sort of broader policy point. And we, you know, this isn't multinational or international corporate company and because it's cloud-based, I mean, you're right, I assume the workforce is going to come from who knows where. But, I mean, John raised an interesting point earlier in his comments and it would be the, sort of the perspective of the company perhaps for a moment. On one hand, you'd say, well, look, if they want to do business with us, then any company can voluntarily provide equal benefits to all their employees. And that, that's a choice, you know, that they're going to have to make. I mean, use a board and say, well, look, that's, we're going to draw the red line, if you will, and say that's, that's, that's a choice that this company's going to have to make to do business with us. But I suppose it's conceivable, and, and maybe that Dan has more information, that it's possible that there's a, a law in a state or in a country that says, "Thou shalt not provide equal benefits." In which case, the company, you know, that, that would be an enforcement issue for the company, which is different than a situation, you know, where a company can, just as a matter of policy, agree to provide equal benefits all over the world. But anyway, that's just a, just a quick comment.
Supervisor... I mean, I assume that's the scenario that their legal counsel has raised, but it, it does raise the question of, I assume they can certify that it's their policy as a company to provide equal benefits wherever legally possible throughout the world. I mean, I would think they could, they could make that assertion. I'm sure they do, I'm sure that's, I assume that's their policy, given that it's, given the kind of common practices in the Bay Area, but I don't know if anyone has knowledge about that.
I don't know if that's their specific policy. We could ask for them to do that. They, to address a question that, that you raised earlier about limiting the, the folks that work, that are working on this, the attorney that I was negotiating this with, and this was the, the sticking point that we spent most of our time battling over, at least between the legal counsel, she was working out of Virginia. And so if they had a, arguably, you could say that she was working on this project and she may have to advise on this project going forward.
Sure.
If Virginia had, happened to pass a law that prohibited same-sex couples from receiving equal benefits, then she could no longer work on this project. They would have to...
No, I understand that point, but my question was a factual inquiry whether the company, as a matter of policy, at least in the United States, afford, extend equal benefits to all its employees unless prohibited by law. In other words, I'm not sure any state, you, you know, it's, it's a bit of a, it's a factual inquiry. I mean, I, I would hope they would have that commitment, at least in the United States.
I, I don't know if that's, if that's their exact policy, but it's something that we can, we can find out.
And then I guess the other thing that, I mean, I, I mean, this is a tough issue and I'm going, again, I'm glad that President Horsley has brought some focus to it. But I, I, I think Supervisor Tessier's comments are ones we have to think hard about because it is, you know, we're, we're moving into this cloud environment. And so I, I think we, we need to go as far as we possibly can. I would, I wouldn't personally walk away from the contract, I don't think, but I, I wonder if we could do a little bit more. Like, for example, can they make a best, can they, can they make a best efforts commitment that, you know, that they will use employees that, that have, have these equal benefits or reside in states where they're not prohibited? I mean, I, I, you know, I guess maybe we need to, I bet we could tighten it up, as might sense, but we, we probably, we probably are not going to get a complete, you know, black and white, we're going to do this everywhere in the world. But I, I wonder, you know, maybe it is worth, I'd be wanting to take the time to see if we could, A, get a little more knowledge about their practices and, B, see if we could assert some language that would at least move us closer to what we all desire.
I will say that we, we did warn them that they would be in danger of losing this contract by mere virtue of the fact that we had to present this to the board.
Yeah.
And it was an issue that the board held near to their hearts. And so we told them to provide us with your absolute best offer in terms of revising the, the language of the contract. Now, what you're suggesting is perhaps more of a factual change to it, a, a good faith promise that they would only use those employees that were in states that provided equal benefits.
Like, I mean, like, for example, there's going to be different factual circumstances. Like if there's a, a consult, you know, one of their employees needs to really engage specifically with San Mateo County, they could probably find an employee that resides in a state that has these rights. You know, and, and there are other circumstances where they, people all over the world, maybe just updating the, the fundamental software that resides in the cloud, you know, won't be, it wouldn't be as, it'd be all different because it wouldn't be as, it would benefit us, but it would also benefit all their other clients. And so, so there are, I think it seems there are different, you know, different places where they might probably make stronger commitments.
One thing I, I will say to underscore what Mr. Byers said was that some of the contracts that we are currently negotiating, contracts that are renewals of contracts with current vendors that have been serving the county for decades, perhaps because we have changed the language of our standard contract and this is highlighted more, or perhaps it's just because of the, of the political environment that we're living in right now. More and more, our office is seeing vendors take issue with this specific provision and that same specific point that Workday is taking issue with.
I'm not surprised to hear that.
Are there actually states, there are actual states that prohibit, that interfere a relationship between an employee and employer?
We, we...
I guess there are, but it's incredible.
We did ask Workday to point out to us which states they were concerned about and that they had employees in currently. And their response was, well, they couldn't point anything specifically right now, but given the economic, given the political climate right now, it, things could change at any moment. This is a five-year contract, that was their concern.[1753.83] This is a five-year contract that was their concern.
So in other words, there aren't any states now that prohibit a relationship between the employer and the employee?
Supervisor Horsley, I'd like to think I was an expert in law across all 50 states, but that's just not true, so.
But you're in the county council's office, you guys know everything.
I wonder if maybe Mr. Byers and yourself could maybe work on seeing if there is some middle ground language, you know, as one of my colleagues mentioned, you know, something in the area of unless prohibited by law, which would tie their hands and puts us, especially on the global side, or a best effort.
Yeah.
Something that, you know, they're going to give us their best shot at. Because again, I'm concerned that we're working on a global market, and yet we don't have that benefit of controlling everybody. And then we have to make a decision, do we want to be futuristic, or do we want to stay with what we have, or something of that nature? And that's, could be an issue.
Yeah, I mean, I was, thank you Supervisor Tessier. I was going to suggest the same thing, that we go back and really, now that we know where the, kind of, the board is, you know, the board's sentiments on this issue, and we've heard many of your ideas, we kind of understand, have a sense of kind of where you're at on this issue, that we'll go back and see if we can bring back something that's acceptable to the board at a future board meeting. I assume, now, John, if you have an idea, what boarding meeting we might bring this back to.
I'd like to put a timeframe on this. And I'm looking at John. I assume that it won't create a problem if October 1st, we continue this to October 1st?
I, perhaps what I would stand up to suggest, we have a representative from Workday here that guys can speak to some of the questions you had and any revised timeline.
And I, just to make a couple of other points, the distinction we may want to draw here is between the actual working on the implementation of this, which I suspect can be pretty tightly drawn.
Yes.
And I think, as Supervisor Pine said, it would be pretty unusual for a state, I think, to have a law that interferes with what a private employer does with their own employees. But then the other distinction is, in maintaining this system on a global basis, I think we're going to be limited as to our reach on international law and employees in other parts of the world. So that might be where we try to draw these distinctions, but I agree that if there's a representative here, they may want to speak to that.
And while he comes up, perhaps I can just add, having served formerly for the city and county of San Francisco, I'm familiar with some of the ways we've dealt with these before, as you would probably suspect, San Francisco has some fairly, fairly strong views about how we manage contracts with regards to this type of provision. You know, we did our best effort in San Francisco, obviously, to ensure equal benefits. I won't say we were always successful. To Mr. Malp's point, it sometime did come down between the difference of the people on the ground doing the work versus sort of this more global approach to maintenance. And that, in San Francisco, it was expanded to include things like any software maintenance contract, any hardware commodities contract, because chips are built in China and things like that. So there was a lot of complexity when we dealt with in China. We tried to go down several levels, which made it at times very difficult, frankly, to find someone that would comply with all our rules when you extended it down through the supply chain as to who contributed to a project. You know, I will just say, having worked for a company at one time in my career that, for whatever internal policy reason, would not provide equal benefits, the way they addressed the problem is they simply didn't sign direct contracts with organizations like San Francisco. They would subcontract all their work through a prime that would, and then their subcontract with the prime contractor would simply specify that they didn't have to meet all the prime contractor requirements. And so that was how they addressed the issue. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just saying that this is a great conversation to have. I think it's pertinent to not only this contract, but a lot of other contracts we'll be talking about ongoing. So, but with that, I'll turn it over to the folks from Workday.
Thank you, John. Thank you, supervisors. Assistant County Manager Holland, County Manager Malp. Appreciate the opportunity to address this issue and the thoughtful consideration that's been given. And you asked a question earlier that I'd like to address, and I just had some notes here. Our attorney actually lives in Virginia, and the Attorney General in Virginia has asked state universities and colleges to stop guaranteeing equal treatment for all employees regardless of sexual orientation. There are a couple of states where the National Guard are having issues with this, the same thing. So it is coming up and outside of certainly the IT world, it's coming up in other areas of the world as well. And we want to be careful that we do not by contract obligate ourselves to violate laws and jurisdictions outside of San Mateo County, which may have far less fair and progressive ordinances. And one thing to think about is, it's not just the implementation of the software that we are using our employees or contractors, but it's really the ongoing care and feeding of the software. So things like development, things like research around HR laws and payroll laws, and it will be global employees and contractors. So it's, we're not talking about a finite amount of people. It ends up being a very large amount of people that are distributed across the world that we're dealing with. So we just need to be careful about putting ourselves in a situation where by contract we would be violating any local laws.
See, I have a hard time distinguishing, basically what you're saying is that the governor of the state of Virginia can tell state employees or the state university what to do. I have a hard time imagining that the governor of Virginia can tell a private employer what you could do in terms of benefits. I mean, could they say, you can't offer pension plans, you can't offer, they don't do that? And I just, you know, I just, I know about Texas and the Texas National Guard saw that as well. But again, it's when a private employer chooses to do, provide a certain benefit for employees, I just cannot imagine that there is a government interest or ability to actually stop them from offering that benefit. Just, you know, one person's opinion up here. But, so I have a difficult time approving this without some modification of it. I do hear what my colleagues are saying, and if it's possible to try and hammer something out that is more acceptable, at least to me, I'm willing to do that.
One quick comment, County Manager Malp and I were just having a sidebar here about a possible resolution, and I think this is kind of reflects where the board may be going with this, but certainly you'll tell me if not. What about a provision that indicates that the county shall not waive equal benefits provision unless there's a specific statute, you know, a specific statute that bars the provision of equal benefits, either in a state or internationally? Some of that effect, I mean, is it conceivable there is such a statute existing in a state? Yes. Certainly, is it conceivable there's a law in, you know, that would apply to workers in India that might be working on a cloud basis? Sure.
That's the crux of the issue, right? I mean, isn't that why Workday doesn't, I mean, isn't that Workday's objection that there could be, there either is or could be a law that will interfere with their compliance? So this, this would seem like perhaps it would address the issue.
And I can accept that as a compromise.
Okay.
So Supervisor Tessier?
Well, I guess the question will be, if we can get Workday to accept something of that nature, if it works, I mean, it's got to work for both sides, I'm assuming, but I think it would be a good faith effort to put something in that, you know, if it's lawful somewhere else, then you utilize that. If it's not, obviously, we can't make you break the law. I mean, I do get what you're saying, so something that doesn't put you in jeopardy, but protects us for what our ordinance reads.
You'd probably have to go back to Virginia.
Right. Yeah, and I think, I think our company policy is actually consistent with your sentiments and sentiments of the supervisors, but we also have to write these contracts in a way that allows us not to be in any kind of double jeopardy. And so this issue was discussed back and forth between the two legal departments, and we felt the language that we landed on actually narrowly defined the issue to one of the three cases that were, that could come up. So we did provide, I think, fairly narrow language on this issue, so that it was only when, you know, really by law that...
Maybe we ought to pull that up now. Do you have the language, or can you tell us where it is? I mean, it's in here somewhere, it's hard to access it.
The language of the ordinance code in front of me, which they limited...
What's their contractual, what's the contractual, can you read the contractual provision?
No, I don't have the contractual provisions, I think Mr. Byers has those.
Yeah, do you have the MSA hearing?
So here's the section that talks about non-discrimination.
Perfect.
There's the underlined section that talks about Workday, how they comply.
Okay, so the contract states that Workday complies with Chapter 2.84, which is the county's ordinance on provision of equal benefits and the requirement of that in contracts. By stating, "Workday complies with Chapter 2.84 by offering the same benefits to its employees with spouses and its employees with domestic partners for portions of Workday's operations that occur in accordance with Subparts A and B of Chapter 2.84 of the county ordinance, and in accordance with Subpart C." Subpart C is the language that says any contracts within the United States that were, I'm sorry, any work by an employee within the United States that's working on the county contract. "In accordance with Subpart C of Chapter 2.84030 of the county ordinance code, except where prohibited by state or local law, regulation, or ordinance." So that is somewhat in compliance with...
Is that what you, John, is it sounds like what you were suggesting?
I think it does. It's consistent with what I was suggesting.
It was consistent with what you were commenting on, unless it's prohibited by law, it sounds like it's actually in there. I mean, we might be...
Yes, and just to clear something up, as the discussion has gone on, there's been references to international, this is an international company, but our ordinance code only prohibits employees who are working within the United States on the project.
That's a good clarification.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification, Dan.
Mr. President, perhaps a question on the Workday representative. Is there any place where Workday has employees now where you are prohibited from doing that? So if that's not the case, then our ordinance has complied with, and this exception in the future would apply to them should that change?
Right.
Thank you for the question, and I'm going to read from some notes. So the problem that our attorney has is that the laws seem to be in flux. Right now, we, in Virginia, the Attorney General is running for governor, and the laws there are in flux, and some of our team is there that will support you. There are some issues in Texas and Mississippi as well that we've identified that could, that could put us in jeopardy. And the National Guard is dealing with those issues right now in Texas. The current wording is that only, is that the only exception, the current wording in the contract is that the only exception to us providing equal benefits anywhere in the U.S. that is being used to provide the SaaS to San Mateo is where it is prohibited by local law. We want to be compliant. The only exception that we are offered in this current wording of the contract is where it's prohibited by law.
Well, that sounds like what we...
I am comfortable with it. I think the, I mean, I'm an attorney too, and I know how attorneys think, and you say to yourself, boy, every time I pick up the paper, somebody in a red state is threatening to take away rights, so geez, maybe they'll be successful. And that's why the issues come up. I, Mr. Horsley, I think your gut instinct is very strong, though, that it would seem unlikely that they could interfere with a contract with a private employer, but they will probably promise their attempt to do so, and whether they ever succeed, who knows? So I think this works.
Yeah, unless anybody had a comment. I'm going to make a motion based on the reading of that. It appears to me that it reads the way we want it to, unless it's prohibited by law in local or any state, that they would comply with our county ordinance. So I'm going to make a motion to approve this based on the language that's in there that sounds from a legal perspective, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Byers, that this does work for us, based on the fact that we're saying unless it's prohibited by law. So I'm going to make a motion to approve these resolutions A through G on this contract.
So second?
Second, okay. I was just going to make a quick just comment that it wasn't clear, just when the, in the actual transmittal to us just said Workday agrees to abide by the terms, et cetera, et cetera, regarding equal benefits, except prohibited. So it's not, what is as clear, it is now clear in my mind, so I'm much more satisfied with it. So all in favor?
Aye.
I just wanted to make one comment. I think this has been a really good conversation that we have had, and I think that we all are on the same page, that we do not want anyone discriminated against, nor do we want to do business with anyone who discriminates. But as we've also talked, this is an issue that's going to reappear, and is there something that we can start doing internally now to have better defenses should it arise again?
And I do think it's a civil rights issue, and I think that the states that try to do that will eventually end up in court.
Absolutely.
Mr. President, if I might ask the board's indulgence for one more moment, it might be helpful on this issue, given the discussion the board has just had. If we might be able to get a side letter from Workday stating, as of the date of this contract, to your knowledge, not prospectively what may happen, but as of the date of this contract, whether you are prohibited from paying any of those benefits in any other state? If you could just send us a letter to that effect. Would you be willing to do that?
As you can imagine, I'll need to run that by our attorney, but I appreciate the request, and it is something that I'll follow up on today.
And one other comment, if I may, I mean, one, again, hearing the sentiment of the board, I mean, one thing the board could consider is the advisability of including a provision, in other words, approve it today on the condition that Workday agrees to a further provision, that they will in good faith try not to assign any employees to work on this contract that might be in one of those jurisdictions.
Yeah, the difficulty there, though, I'm sorry.
We would send that to them, or we would request that of them?
Correct. So you would request that they, in other words, you approve this contract on the condition that, that they use their best efforts, or reasonable efforts, not to assign any employees to work on this particular contract if they are located in one of those jurisdictions?
Is that just a side letter, or does that require a motion?
It would be a conditional agreement. Now, I might want to hear from Workday first, you know, it's just a suggestion, but...
Yeah, I think, and I understand where you're headed with that. I think Mr. Walton brought up an example earlier of an employee that you hire in one state and then moves for family reasons to another state. And, you know, we want to not restrict our employees' mobility. And we, I would imagine our response to that would be that that would be very difficult to administer, and we don't want to be in the business of controlling our employees' mobility.
Okay. I think the other, I mean, the other difficulty, that's going to take a lot of work because you have to define what working on the project means. And as we've, we've discussed today, there's different levels of engagement. I don't personally need that provision.
I think it just becomes unwieldy to be able to understand every country and every part of this world, you know, I mean, and have us limit the cost of them doing business with us, too. I mean, I think the part about, you know, what we put in, if it's prohibited by law somewhere, we understand that, otherwise you're going to live by our ordinance, I think, is a reasonable understanding.
I think our company policy is one that says, we provide equal benefits except where prohibited by law. So I think our company policy already addresses the question in hand. So I'm not sure it actually takes a side letter versus just exposing our company policy to you.
But the purpose of the side letter is just to inform us.
That's a different issue.
Yeah, if, if in fact there is that restriction anywhere that you do business now, just, really just to inform us.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think there's two issues raised. The first, we're coming back to the county manager's one is, which shouldn't be an issue, is just to your attorney's knowledge, not saying that they'll read every code throughout the country, but to his or her knowledge, you know, are there, are any such prohibitions in effect? I think the answer is probably no. And then, and then the other, I think we're not, I don't, I think the board is okay not requiring additional language along the lines suggested by Mr. Byers, but...
Yeah, I think our attorney will keep coming back to the concept that over time, things are in flux, and this is a software as a service, which means it's an ongoing service with many different employees that'll be in contact with the software. It's not a finite number of employees, and it's not a finite time. It's not just during the implementation, for example. And so I think that they'll, they'll keep coming back to potentially today not representing in the lifetime of the contract, the, a steady state.
You know, if a state actually does do something to that effect of basically prohibiting benefits to certain classes of people, I mean, your company's going to have some real HR problems. So, for example, if you had a same-sex couple with children who moved to a state where it's allegedly prohibited, what do you do now? Who covers, so you've got to serve an HR nightmare potentially. So I'd probably behoove your company to fight those kinds of laws. In any case, that motion's been made and seconded and approved, so thank you.
Did we do a roll call?
Oh, roll... Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. Roll call?
Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Groom?
Yes.
Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
Supervisor Tessier?
Aye.
President Horsley?
Yes. Okay, now we're onto item number 10, this County Manager's Report Number 7, and it's on Public Safety Realignment Local Implementation Report Number 3 for April 2013 to June 2013.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm pleased to provide a report on the implementation of realignment for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 1213. And I might add parenthetically that I know Supervisor Groom attended the CSAC Board of Directors meeting last week, in which the governor spoke about the, his current plans for reducing the prisoners' populations, and perhaps at the end of my report Supervisor Groom might want to add to that with the, the most recent knowledge regarding this subject. This report, I think it's important to note that October 1st will be a milestone in that it'd be two years for the implementation of AB 109. The implementation, of course, has varied statewide. However, I think you should be very proud of this county in that I think we've achieved some significant milestones during that period, and have certainly shown that this is a county, once again, that can work together in the law enforcement community in order to deal with the challenges that AB 109 imposed upon us. In fact, our departments continue to work closely and collaboratively together on realigned services. Under the leadership of Chief Probation Officer Keen, probation officers in the PRCS unit will undergo extensive training over the next several months in new evidence-based practice methods that will be used in the field. These new methods, which will include training in crisis intervention, graduated sanctions, and moral recognition therapy, easy for me to say, are expected to provide all of the PRCS probation officers with a new set of better tools to assist the, them in supervising their caseloads. In addition, the probation department is working very closely with Service Connect staff to develop embedded teams that will conduct probation compliance checks together, and this approach will be helpful in providing supervisees and their families with the human and health service support information and follow-up that they need to successfully complete probation. Despite these challenges of increased numbers of locally sentenced inmates, we continue to see overcrowding in our jail, and we continue to work on the construction of the new jail facility, which, at this point in time, I'm pleased to report, is on time and it, within budget. Finally, under Chief Keen's leadership, the Community Corrections Partnership will continue to meet on a quarterly basis to exchange information and serve as an advisory board to the chief. In fact, our next meeting is on Thursday at 3:00 in the board's chambers. So as we reach this critical two-year mark on public safety realignment, our biggest challenge will remain the actions of the state, specifically receiving the necessary funding to continue these vital services, and of course, the state problems in dealing with continuing court orders regarding, or reduction of the state prison population. With that, I would invite Supervisor Groom to tell us what's the latest up to minute, realizing that probably it changed five minutes ago.
Well, thank you, Mr. Malp, you know, Governor Brown came to the CSAC Board of, County Association of Government Board of Directors. He spent an hour and a half. And with, when the governor is present, it's always lively. But he, he really, he, he was very serious about his, to get us out of this consent decree that the federal government has placed. He repeated several times that he felt that no one had really been trying to work with the federal receivership until he came to office, and his goal is to get us out of that decree. And he felt that his program of a combination of new, potential new jail cells, as well as taking prisoners out of state, as well as working with continuing the, the efforts that are being made now under realignment in the local counties, was, was the, the direction that we should go in, and he was prepared to, to put many hundreds of millions of dollars into this proposal over the next three or four years. Senators, the Assembly went along with his plan. Senator Steinberg and the Senate did not, and so Senator Steinberg's aides presented an alternative problem, alternative solution, which many members of the CSAC Board felt was a, simply a mirror program of what we have now. Funds for rehabilitation, funds for more facilities to do that rehabilitation. The governor's point was, it's all well and good, I'm not opposed to it in one little bit, but that's not gonna get us out of the consent decree, and we need to get out of this. He also spent several minutes talking about the, the hot, the health jail plan, of which that federal res- court is able to spend whatever dollars they want to spend without getting any approval. And he does not feel that they have made the progress that they should be making, and he would like to see us get out of that program also, because the, the, it's, it's just like a revolving door, spending money. Just yesterday, apparently Senator Steinberg and Governor Brown came to some accord where they're gonna take the merger of both of those plans and ask for a three-year extension from the, from the, from the consent order to see if we could have three more years to get ourselves out of this. I think the governor intends to make a really important case to the consent board about what the first phase of realignment has done. And there are many counties that have, I think, done as well as we have, or perhaps we've done better, but they're close to us. There are some counties that have not achieved anything at all. But he is gonna use those numbers and the dispersment of, of state prisoners to the local prison system, and our, our, our real, our, our restoration programs that we've put in place to see if he can buy three more years. That's the latest I heard out of, like, 5:00 last night.
I, I, I think the, the deal is, as Supervisor Groom said, try to get a three-year extension, but part of the deal also is, should that fail, there's gonna be an appropriation of 315 million to place these prisoners either in local corrections facilities or out of state.
Senator Steinberg's Chief of Staff reiterated a, a number of times that his alternative plan did not involve sending any new prisoners locally. And I think the governor silently disagreed with that.
Any questions?
Is the governor willing to send some more money down for a facility that's almost finished?
There's an already.
Yeah. Anyway, I think maybe that's one of the arguments we need to use back with him. He talks about it, he wants those new facilities and all that for rehabilitation, yet at the same time, his stallion has not spent, or has spent very little of the money they allocate to that.
You're absolutely right.
So, we're still on it.
Supervisor Pine?
Yeah, I just had a, a couple, a couple of questions. Maybe this might be for my colleague Supervisor Groom. Under the governor's plan, when he's, he's having some of the inmates go out of state and some down to the counties, the, the counties have to opt into that, or is the state able to say, well, there's a vacancy in this part of the state, so you take?
It was unclear to me.
The intention, if I understand it correctly, is that those inmates would be placed where there are openings, and the county's willing to receive them, and be paid for them.
Okay. And then, just a couple of quick points on the, on the report, which is very helpful. And right in the, in the beginning, it notes that a majority of the PRCS supervisees now reside in the North County, which, interesting in and of itself. But then it goes on to say, in a higher percentage than ever before from out of county, which I kind of, I thought PRCS, you, you're supposed to be returned to your county, so.
They're returned to the county that they were convicted in. They reside.
Convicted in, not where they reside.
That's correct.
That's right, convicted in, yeah, okay. So, those are the, okay.
I, I might, I might add, I had a long conversation with Chief Keen on that point, and he's been working with his counterpart in San Francisco to try to have those individuals be supervised, and has really not had much reception. And that might be something to elevate to a conversation that the board has with the mayor, because they're, these folks live in San Francisco, they probably lived in San Francisco when they committed the crime in this county, and they, you know, it certainly makes sense from a system standpoint that they be supervised in that county.
They probably made a mistake when they came to San Mateo County, because they end up in jail, where in San Francisco, they would end up not doing very much time.
Yeah, that's it. But I think that's a good suggestion, for, you know, Supervisor Horsley, for consideration. I, I don't know if there's any chance the city would do it, but. It, it also, the report notes that the, you know, it's continued, it's, it continues to be a challenge to get people to, you know, accept services over here on, they're not numbered. It says the multiple, the multiple disciplinary team reviews. The challenge is engaging supervisees in treatment programs. Many are resistant to treatment. I mean, we, of course, we've heard that many times, and I don't know if there's any new insights or thoughts on, on that, but that, that seems like crux of a lot of our issues.
I, I don't have, but I don't, there's representatives from probation here today, perhaps they wish to comment on that aspect, right?
Morning supervisors, Mr. Malp, Mr. Holland, Mr. Byers. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Again, I just, your, your latest thinking about how you try to break down this resistance to services, when, you know, we have services, we, we form the, you know, the individuals that these services are here, they'll be helpful to them, but they, they turn their back on them.
That is the, the biggest challenge right now, and in anticipating some of these questions, I went and talked to the, the probation officers who actually supervise the, this population. And so it's voluntary whether they accept the services or not, and a lot of these folks, a lot of this realignment population are people who are used to being on parole, and not to disparage parole, but the parole model is more on reporting, so if you were reporting, you were basically succeeding on parole, whether we want to do a lot more with you in terms of connecting you with services. I went out last Friday with one of our PRCS officers to San Francisco coincidentally, and one of the things that we're trying to do to incentivize these folks into accepting the services is to show them that in probation, we're actually going to handhold them from beginning to the end. And some of the things that you were talking about, Mr. Malp, that we're doing, that are all evidence-based, is to reinforce with them that if they accept the services, that we're not gonna have this knee-jerk reaction every time they have a technical violation, and that we're going to, instead of returning them to custody, perhaps work with them long enough to get them the services and then complete probation successfully. That is the biggest challenge.
All right, thank you.
The, the one other point, I think, to be made in connection with that is, as the board's noted, the, the PRCS population drops and will continue to drop till, till it goes away. The 1170Hs and the more traditional probation caseloads, there are sanctions and court orders that allow the probation staff to work more directly on these services with those individuals, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Yes, and so the idea of what, some of the points you were making, Mr. Malp, is to, instead of just going out in the community, and we're always gonna have the, the protect the community part of the aspect of supervising this population, but we want to make sure that we're monitoring the compliance with this hand while supporting, supporting them with this hand, and that's why we're gonna incorporate some of this evidence-based stuff, not just when we refer them to, to treatment in, you know, CBOs, community-based organizations, but also in, in the immediate, when we're at their houses, knocking on their doors, so once we leave, they feel like they're not going to go out and, and, and reoffend. And again, the graduated sanctions part of this piece is a major part of it, and we're gonna send all our officers to the graduated sanctions training. And again, last Friday out in the field, I, I was pleased to see one of our officers who could have arrested a PRCS supervisee for a technical violation who decided not to, based on the fact that that supervisee had, had a place to stay, had what he referred to as his dream job at KFC, and so the officer didn't automatically react to the very small trace amount of marijuana by rearresting him and instead deferred it. So that's how we plan on supervising these folks. I think eventually, when the word gets out to all of them, that'll be an incentive to accept the services as opposed to denying them.
Do you ever use, do, do much with electronic monitoring of your parolees or probationers, and especially like, I know you do flash incarceration, which is, I guess, a pretty good technique, but do you ever use electronic home monitoring? And I know we set aside a million dollars for electronic monitoring. I, I don't know if probation has accessed that or used that as a tool, maybe as an incentive?
So we do extensively with the juvenile population, but not with the adult population?
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, sorry, but with the adult population that you're supervising, they, they could be quite difficult.
Currently, we're not using EMP or electronic monitoring for the adult population, but that is something that I know Chief Keen is looking at.
Do we, do we still have that million dollars that we set aside?
I have to check with, with Jim and they have rolled into the unbalanced unspent.
Oh.
For the coming fiscal year. If it hasn't been spent, it, it exists, it may just exist in a different form.
Yeah, it just might be, might be a way of, of, you know, tracking your more resistant probationers, parolees.
I think it's a good tool. I just came out of the juvenile division, and we, and we used it in very effectively, I thought.
Yeah. Okay. What, thank you. One other question, it does, it's not clear to me, the actual, I always am used to, I like to know the numbers of people that are in each one of our facilities, and I don't really see that here. Is it someplace?
I could, I could get you that, we have that report, yeah.
All right, thanks. Any other, just Supervisor Pine?
First, I'm, your, your point is well-taken on the potential with EM. I've always been struck by the fact that we have used it successfully, we use it, it seems to me fairly regularly in the juvenile setting, so I'm glad we're looking at that. I had one, one question and one comment. Can you tell us a little more about how the flash incarcerations are, are going, and what's, how, how long is that typically, and, and, and how are those working out in terms of their effectiveness?
Again, being new to the division, I, I went and checked with the PRCS supervising probation officers, anticipating some of these questions, and they, of course, all unanimously said it's working great. The, the one issue that I do see as, you know, being, running the unit, is that it's not being applied consistently, and the idea of having our officers go to training, state CPAC-sponsored training, is that they begin applying those, you know, graduated sanctions, flash incarcerations consistently, so you don't have Officer A, excuse me, who gives an automatic 10 days for a technical violations, and you have another officer who might give one or two. We want to start considering things like, when you flash incarcerate someone, you have to be cognizant of the fact that two or three days in custody, although it may not seem like a big deal up front, it may lead to that person losing their job.
Yeah, yeah.
Which in turn will lose to them losing their housing, and, and so forth and so on, so.
So the, it sounds like it ranges from a day to maybe up to 10 days in some cases, or?
That's the exact range, and in one officer particularly, he, he said, well, you know, my, my folks don't start flying right until I flash them at least twice. That's a quote.
Yeah, it's, it's all in the implementation, isn't it? So then finally, one thing that jumped off the page, I'm sure everyone else noted, but I just would like to note it here publicly, is that, you know, we're two years in the realignment now, and, you know, the, the document notes that crime data shows that, you know, there has not been an increase in crime in San Mateo County. I mean, there's been a lot in the papers about, maybe some of the nature of crime has changed. We're reading a lot about thefts and residential theft, but, I mean, that's, that's very good news, that we're two years in, and I think that's because of the, you know, and, you know, the good work we're doing.
I think it's because of the work of the probation department and our outstanding sheriff's department.
I mean, it's significant, it really is.
I appreciate you saying that, Supervisor.
Christina Corpus back there is one of our deputies, and.
It was based on the early foundation in the sheriff's department, I'm sure you meant, you meant to add.
And because of Supervisor Tessier's guy worked with the sheriff's department.
So if you don't have any, any more questions, if you don't mind me saying that.
Any more questions from anyone? None? Okay, thanks very much.
We need to make a motion to accept the report? I'm sorry.
Do we have to do that?
John, or?
No, I don't believe.
Okay.
Did you want to make a comment?
Well, since you mentioned the sheriff's department, I just want to say, and Mr. Malp touched on it, that we've been truly fortunate to, to have the level of collaboration that we have with, with the SO and all the other partners, HSA, BHRS, the CBOs, it really has been a collaborative teamwork kind of thing, and that's the only thing, that will definitely make this possible going forward, so thank you.
Yeah, and, and thanks for your work as well. One speaker on this is Martin Fox.
Thank you very much, President Horsley, members of the board, and thank you for recognizing the importance of incentives. And let me ask you to seriously consider taking the incentives factor to a level higher, because I believe that probation officers who produce positive results should receive incentives as well. Because we're holding them responsible. Because we're holding them responsible, I think they deserve the reward of having their production of positive results recognized in a tangible way. And that should be our orientation with everything, is to give people incentives, like Mr. Joy in his reemployment program, where he's paying people to show up, he's giving them an incentive. That's exactly the approach to take, and I think it starts with giving the supervisors an incentive as well. I think we need to establish some kind of.
Give them an incentive every two weeks, their paycheck. Go ahead.
I'm not saying it necessarily has to be monetary. You saw, you get positive results from the proclamations that you issue at the beginning of every meeting. I think it would be a great thing to recognize, absolutely. It's the same thing that's at the heart of Laura's Law. It's an incentive. It creates an incentive for treatment compliance. It creates an incentive to overcome the treatment resistance. It's the incentive factor that you don't have in a voluntary-only system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Now it's time for board members' reports. Supervisor Groom, do you have a report?
No, Mr. President.
Supervisor Pine?
Could you come back?
I could. Supervisor Slocum?
I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of, I'm sure I'll butcher this name, but Amelie Ley Muyec, I think, might be close. But she was the woman that was tragically hit on her bicycle while riding in San Francisco and died. She was 24 years old. She was born in France and moved to the Bay Area when she was seven, and she went to school in Menlo Park, having graduated from St. Joseph's and then Menlo School. She went on to USC, graduated in 2011 with a degree in communications, and she worked for Vosse Communications, which is a company that was founded by Menlo Park Councilman Rich Klein. And she's survived by her mother, Jessie Jewett, of Redwood City, and our thoughts and prayers go out to the entire family. Second, just FYI, that the redistricting committee, under the leadership of Supervisor Tessie, continues to meet, and we have a meeting tonight, tomorrow night, and the following night. And I'm sure there have been new maps, new lines submitted, and we'll look forward to reviewing those, I guess, starting tonight. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Supervisor Tessie?
Yes, thank you. Just a reminder that the 26th Annual Seniors on the Move Conference, sponsored by Congresswoman Spear and my office, will be held on Monday, November 4th, at the San Mateo County Event Center. Also, there's an Older Driver Seminar here in Redwood City, September 19th, at the Veterans' Memorial Senior Center at 1455 Madison, and that's from 9:00 to 12:00. And we were going to be holding a San Mateo County Colish for Safe Schools Breakfast and an update on November 7th, but I think we're going to be meeting with some folks from Southern California and also some people locally, so we've now postponed that until the 1st of the year.
Okay. Just Supervisor Pine?
Thank you for giving me the time to organize myself. Three items. Yesterday marked the third anniversary of the San Bruno explosion. The city had a very nice remembrance and really focused on all the good things happening in that neighborhood. Of the 38 homes destroyed, 22 are essentially been rebuilt. If you had a chance, you'd take a drive-through, it's, they've done some nice work, a lot of, actually a lot of green construction, in fact. There's a set of 10 lots that the city is going to put out the RFP for a development. I believe all the damaged homes have been repaired. And it was nice last night because the city actually welcomed some of the residents back to their homes. But I do want to adjourn in memory of the eight individuals who lost their lives in that tragedy. Moving to a new item. I wanted to thank Cal Fire and the other responders to putting, quickly putting out the flames on San Bruno Mountain this weekend. It was, it's funny, on Saturday I went to, no, it's Saturday, yeah. Saturday morning, I went to the, take a hike on one side of the mountain, and it was a beautiful day, hot, beautiful, could see everything from into Daly City, and it's gorgeous. And then on the other side of the mountain that afternoon, there was a fire that was pretty scary for a while, 41 acres, and some homes were evacuated in South City, but again, due to the good work of Cal Fire and others, that was, that was put out. And then finally, just to adjourn in memory also of Walter Haig from Milbrae, who passed away at the age of 95. He worked at Kilpatrick's Bakery in San Francisco for 42 years before he retired in 1980. He was named Man of the Year in Milbrae in 2009, and was active in a number of organizations, volunteered for the Milbrae Police Department, active in the annual wine festival and Milbrae's beautification program. He also served our country in World War II. So I do adjourn in his memory today.
I was just going to report, I attended the Lafco Conference in Squaw Valley. Couple of the, two most interesting things. First of all, is the, you know, the snowpack in the Sierras is declining, so, you know, we're going to end up in the long run having significant problems with water. I don't know if you have anybody read about problems that the city of Fresno is having. They use to serve their communities, mostly groundwater, and the aquifer is dropping. I think if they sent something like 100 feet in just the last, well, since they started using it. The other thing is that because we're up in Squaw Valley, it was, you know, there was fires surrounding us in Yosemite, as we all know. And one of the things I learned from that conference is that, and Cal Fire, I see Justin Chief is here from Cal Fire, the, it used to be that when there was a forest fire, there are computer models that would predict what that fire would do. Well, those models no longer work, that these fires are completely out of control, that the flames are rising 200 feet into the air, which means that it ends up topping trees and, you know, because, you know, redwoods are, to some large extent, resistant to fire, but the tops are not. And so when you have flames 200 feet in the air, it does hit the tops, and it is endangering our sequoias. So that is another reason to be so concerned about global warming, because that clearly is what's happening, is that these fires are becoming much more aggressive, much worse, and it behooves us to continue working on greenhouse gases. So in any case, that concludes my report. And the last one is Martin Fox.
Thank you again for your service. Please adjourn in memory of Scott and Janet Pettit, both 59 years old, who passed away in their North Modesto home before it was burned down on Tuesday, August 6th. Adjourn in memory of Sally Carnan, a 67-year-old high school attendance monitor, and Ryan Carnan, her 29-year-old Army veteran son. Sally passed away before her Simi Valley home was burned down on Saturday, August 24th, and her son was shot and killed, justifiably, by the Simi Valley Police. Adjourn in memory of Nona Flores, the 76-year-old grandmother, and Anthony Flores, the 54-year-old uncle of 25-year-old Jeffrey Flores. They passed away after being knifed at their home in Pinole on Friday, August 30th. Adjourn in memory of Virgil Worrell, a 46-year-old man living with relatives at their home in Union City, who passed away after being justifiably shot by the Union City Police. All seven of them were victims of untreated mental illness. The Pettits were killed by their 25-year-old son living with Asperger's. Sally was killed by her schizophrenic son. Nona and Anthony Flores were killed by their grandson and nephew, who was paranoid, as was Virgil Worrell, when he confronted Union City Police. The Lannerman-Peters Short Axe failure is memorialized in the 6th Pellet District's Sorensen versus the People opinion issued last Wednesday. It produces death and injury on a regular basis. I suggest putting treatment before tragedy and implementing Laura's Law. Thank you.
No adjourn to closed session. Okay, we've returned from closed session. Mr. Byers, would you report on the results of closed session?
Yes, thank you, President Horsey. The board did meet in closed session to discuss Item A, identified on the agenda, and took no action.
Thank you, and I'll adjourn, and we'll come back at 1:34 service awards.